Oh, yeah. It's quite an interesting room. You know... All right, we're up to nine. We've got ten. Here we are. Good for you. Thank you. Perfect timing. All right, we're ready. Can I have the assorted... Good morning or afternoon? Yeah. Can we get the assorted high-level negotiators here? Yeah, in a second here, as soon as we get a little order and quiet. All right. Good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Thursday, November 2, 2000. Call her all.
Berdson, Chek, Fueric, Lant, Hober, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Verly, Thomas, Foransvaks, Walters, Foraro, Tamber is present, and in the corner, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Just so everybody knows, we have quite a number of people here who have asked to be heard, all of them say general comments. As you know, we have had an extensive public hearing, but some things have gone on since then, so unless there is objection from the council, what we're going to do is hear from these people, and we'll have to ask all of you to keep it relatively brief so that we can get to a report from our negotiators and proceed through the one item on our agenda. Let me just count these for a second. One... We have nine people who wish to be heard, so let's set this for, optimistically, fifteen minutes, and we'll go through them in the order I received them. First, Stephen Downing, followed by Augustine Sabala, Richard Benau, Ted Hunt—I don't know what order these are in—Carlos Salvador, Captain Jim Tatro, and I'll read you the rest of them as we go. Mr. Downing. And remember, there are all those people behind you.
I'll try to be brief. Thank you for allowing me to speak, members of the council. My name's Steve Downing. I'm a former deputy chief with the Los Angeles Police Department, but I've been retired twenty years, and so I've been observing for twenty years. And I do have a few comments. I filed a memo with the clerk. Number one, the Tenth Amendment to the United States Constitution provides that the powers not delegated to the United States nor prohibited by the states are reserved to the states respectively or to the people. The provisions by which the DOJ has threatened suit specifically 42 U.S.C. paragraph 141, 41 is unconstitutional. It's not been challenged. The people have the right to local rule when it comes to the establishment, management, and budgetary expenditure related to protective services. The police department budget is the biggest budget in the city. The mayor and the members of the city council were elected by the people to manage and administer the affairs of local government, not the DOJ, not an outside monitor, not the federal court. To place the expenditure of city funds in the management of our protective services in the hands of DOJ, an outside monitor or the federal court amounts to an abandonment of elected office. The people have the right to replace their elected officials at the ballot box when they deem the need for change in the running of their city. The consent decree takes that right away from the people. If the people disagree with the means by which the consent decree is administered or the means by which the funds are allocated for personnel, systems, and oversight, they have no remedy at the ballot box. They cannot go to City Hall to make their objections known, as the elected officials at City Hall will have abrogated their power to act upon the desires of the people. The provisions of the consent decree do not address the core problems of the Rampart scandal. Nowhere in the document or that of the LAPD Board of Inquiry report, which the document was based, is addressed the matter of the 1980 DOJ consent decree related to the hiring of protected classes and the subsequent mismanagement of that decree, which resulted in the hiring of police officers who lacked character, who were members of criminal organizations, and who were generally not qualified to become police officers.
Mr. Downing, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but since we do all have copies of this, and you've read most of it, I think you can trust us to read the rest of it. I'm reading as fast as I can as you talk, but if you'd like to summarize what's in it, I'd encourage you to do that, and we will all have an opportunity to read it as well.
I think the rest of what I say in there is merely housekeeping. It merely addresses the creation of a system for system's sake, and the most important thing is that the people have been eliminated once this is passed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Augustine Sabada.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, council members. I'm here representing the people of Los Angeles, the Spanish-speaking people, the victims of the police abuse on which the DOJ consent decree is based. Now, there's two dates that stand out in our mind right now: October 31st and September 31st. Everybody's heard of the police homicide of Mr. Lee, and we all mourn him. And there's another date, September 1st, when we're going to name this person, this victim of police homicide, Juan Do, killed in the Hollenbeck Division. And a lot of people have not heard of this killing. It was announced on September 1st on Channel 34 at 8:00 p.m. A Spanish-speaking worker did not obey police orders, and he was killed. However, we listened for the follow-up on the 11 o'clock news as they announced. It did not come. Why did it not come? We have to wonder who is behind and who has the power to repress this type of news that's very important to our community, and what happened to that man? We looked for it in newspapers and everything. Nothing came out of it. Three weeks—four weeks after, we were approached by a lady who was the wife of Juan Do, telling us that her husband had been returned to her. Bullet holes, but there were no bullets in him. It seems that the body had been taken to a hospital at Lancaster, and all the bullets had been taken out, so there would be no evidence that this man was killed in the Hollenbeck Division. Since then, between the two, September 1st and October 31st, another police killing took place in the Northeast Division. Now, what is going on here? We're negotiating for a consent decree, and yet we have a police chief who gets on TV—I saw him myself a couple of nights ago—and he indicated that Mr. Lee was a suspect. What was he suspect about?
Mr. Sabada, I...
I'm almost through.
I know, but what I want to make sure is that you have a chance to focus what you want to say about the consent decree, because what you're raising is obviously an issue that we need to look into, but we won't be dealing directly with today.
We feel that the consent decree is not adequate enough to deal with a lot of the problems we have here. We have abuse of power by a mayor who has steadfastly refused until this morning to accept what the people of Los Angeles want, and we have a police chief who has no control and has poorly trained his officers, so poorly that they will shoot through a window or they will shoot somebody and say, "Uh-oh, the consent decree negotiations are coming up, and therefore we must hide this evidence of Juan Do being killed." Therefore, we are asking for the resignation of Police Chief Parks, and bidding good riddance also to Mr. Reardon, who was termed out in April, and hopefully he will be investigated for his abusive power.
Sir, excuse me. That's not what the consent decree is about. Thank you. Richard Benau, followed by Ted Hunt.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm captain with the Los Angeles Police Department, and I'm presently the president of the Los Angeles Police Command Officers Association, so I'm here speaking on behalf of and representing the men and women who are the managers of our police department. I'd like to speak in opposition to the consent decree, as I did once before. In skimming through the consent decree and reading some specific parts in detail, I'm convinced that what it will do will lay an additional layer of bureaucratic requirements on managers of the police department and on police officers who work the street to get in the way of doing what their primary objective is, and that is making the streets of the city safe for the people who live here. I agree with Steve Downing and his comments about whether this process is even legal or not. Local control has been a basis of our country forever, and it appears to me that this consent decree takes the hands out of the people seated in this room and the men and women who manage this police department and gives it to an unaccountable third party, the federal government. So I'm very much opposed to this consent decree and would hope that you would see that as I do also. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Hunt, followed by Carlos Salvador.
Thank you, Madam President. The Christopher Commission was a landmark document, and those proposed reforms were supposed to have totally reformed LAPD, and that was eight years ago. What happened? Where was the oversight? And why didn't it reform LAPD? In a few months, this city council or a new city council is going to be holding hearings. Why is the crime rate skyrocketing? You've already noticed that crime has been going up in the city of Los Angeles. There have been at least seven major reports—or at least one book—that have come out to tell you the same thing: the Christopher Commission, Webster, Luke Cannon's Official Negligence, the Board of Inquiry Report, the Chimerinsky Report, the Willem's UCLA Report, and soon the Police Commission Report. And it's all telling you the same thing, and we're not paying attention to it. You ask for reform, but reform is like change. What we need is a transformation, which is like a transition, and this is why you'll never understand it. It's like moving from one town to another. You can move your body to another town, but until you make that transition, that you actually have moved into another city—in your mind and in your heart—you still live in the place that you used to live. And what has to happen—and that's why it's been pounded over and over again—this is about the culture. And until there is that movement, it will always fail, and this thing's going to fail too.
Thank you. Mr. Salvador.
Buenas tardes. These Spanish we need. My name is Carlos Salvador. I came to talk about the police and in particular, what we have here. There are many brutalities in the streets. And there are many injustices against workers. The police only has a role in protecting workers. If we don't protect them, we don't have a way to defend ourselves. And all this affects the community, and we don't know where to defend ourselves. If we don't protect the workers, we don't know where to defend ourselves. Where do we go? We want a fair and equitable justice for everyone. And we also want... Because we want all the Hispanic officers to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us. We want them to be able to help us.
Mr. Downing, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but since we do all have copies of this, and you've read most of it, I think you can trust us to read the rest of it. I'm reading as fast as I can as you talk, but if you'd like to summarize what's in it, I'd encourage you to do that, and we will all have an opportunity to read it as well.
I think the rest of what I say in there is merely housekeeping. It merely addresses the creation of a system for system's sake, and the most important thing is that the people have been eliminated once this is passed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Augustine Sabada.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, council members. I'm here representing the people of Los Angeles, the Spanish-speaking people, the victims of the police abuse on which the DOJ consent decree is based. Now, there's two dates that stand out in our mind right now: October 31st and September 31st. Everybody's heard of the police homicide of Mr. Lee, and we all mourn him. And there's another date, September 1st, when we're going to name this person, this victim of police homicide, Juan Do, killed in the Hollenbeck Division. And a lot of people have not heard of this killing. It was announced on September 1st on Channel 34 at 8:00 p.m. A Spanish-speaking worker did not obey police orders, and he was killed. However, we listened for the follow-up on the 11 o'clock news as they announced. It did not come. Why did it not come? We have to wonder who is behind and who has the power to repress this type of news that's very important to our community, and what happened to that man? We looked for it in newspapers and everything. Nothing came out of it. Three weeks—four weeks after, we were approached by a lady who was the wife of Juan Do, telling us that her husband had been returned to her. Bullet holes, but there were no bullets in him. It seems that the body had been taken to a hospital at Lancaster, and all the bullets had been taken out, so there would be no evidence that this man was killed in the Hollenbeck Division. Since then, between the two, September 1st and October 31st, another police killing took place in the Northeast Division. Now, what is going on here? We're negotiating for a consent decree, and yet we have a police chief who gets on TV—I saw him myself a couple of nights ago—and he indicated that Mr. Lee was a suspect. What was he suspect about?
Mr. Sabada, I...
I'm almost through.
I know, but what I want to make sure is that you have a chance to focus what you want to say about the consent decree, because what you're raising is obviously an issue that we need to look into, but we won't be dealing directly with today.
Okay. We feel that the consent decree is not adequate enough to deal with a lot of the problems we have here. We have abuse of power by a mayor who has steadfastly refused until this morning to accept what the people of Los Angeles want, and we have a police chief who has no control and has poorly trained his officers, so poorly that they will shoot through a window or they will shoot somebody and say, "Uh-oh, the consent decree negotiations are coming up, and therefore we must hide this evidence of Juan Do being killed." Therefore, we are asking for the resignation of Police Chief Parks, and bidding good riddens also to Mr. Reardon, who was termed out in April, and hopefully he will be investigated for his abusive power.
Sir, excuse me. This is—that's not what the consent decree is about. Thank you. Richard Benau, followed by Ted Hunt.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm captain with the Los Angeles Police Department, and I'm presently the president of the Los Angeles Police Command Officers Association, so I'm here speaking on behalf of and representing the men and women who are the managers of our police department. I'd like to speak in opposition to the consent decree, as I did once before. In skimming through the consent decree and reading some specific parts in detail, I'm convinced that what it will do will lay an additional layer of bureaucratic requirements on managers of the police department and on police officers who work the street to get in the way of doing what their primary objective is, and that is making the streets of the city safe for the people who live here. I agree with Steve Downing and his comments about whether this process is even legal or not. Local control has been a basis of our country forever, and it appears to me that this consent decree takes the hands out of the people seated in this room and the men and women who manage this police department and gives it to an unaccountable third party, the federal government. So I'm very much opposed to this consent decree and would hope that you would see that as I do also. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Hunt, followed by Carlos Salvador.
Thank you, Madam President. The Christopher Commission was a landmark document, and those proposed reforms were supposed to have totally reformed LAPD, and that was eight years ago. What happened? Where was the oversight? And why didn't it reform LAPD? In a few months, this city council or a new city council is going to be holding hearings. Why is the crime rate skyrocketing? You've already noticed that crime has been going up in the city of Los Angeles. There have been at least seven major reports—or at least one book—that have come out to tell you the same thing: the Christopher Commission, Webster, Lou Cannon's Official Negligence, the Board of Inquiry Report, the Chimerinsky Report, the Willem's UCLA Report, and soon the Police Commission Report. And it's all telling you the same thing, and we're not paying attention to it. You ask for reform, but reform is like change. What we need is a transformation, which is like a transition, and this is why you'll never understand it. It's like moving from one town to another. You can move your body to another town, but until you make that transition, that you actually have moved into another city—in your mind and in your heart—you still live in the place that you used to live. And what has to happen—and that's why it's been pounded over and over again—this is about the culture. And until there is that movement, it will always fail, and this thing's going to fail too.
Thank you. Mr. Salvador.
Buenas tardes. These Spanish we need. My name is Carlos Salvador. I came to talk about the police and in particular, what we have here. There are many brutalities in the streets. And there are many injustices against workers. The police only has a role in protecting workers. If they don't, we don't have a way to defend ourselves. If they don't, we don't have a way to defend ourselves. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people. We don't have a way to help the people.
And it never was justified. And even to this day, the police department has not let me in peace. In May, in May, on May 10 of this year, a policeman called my daughter with a pistol. This is my daughter. She has 14 years. And this official called me with a pistol. And he told me to stop. He was going to throw bullets at her. And my daughter continued walking. And thank God she didn't throw bullets at her. But it continues to bother me. This other policeman scoured my house. He also entered without permission. And scoured my house. Because she looked at me and said, "I put a pistol down here." And they're just stupid lies. So, since they killed my daughter, they've never let me in peace. What do they want with me? That's what I want to tell them. That they want with me. If they killed my daughter, it wasn't justified. They're just stupid lies from all the policemen that they said. They're just stupid lies. Here, the local magistrate, Mike Hernandez, doesn't do anything for the community. Also, last year, in 1999, they called me to my house. About 30 or 20 policemen. And they did what they wanted. They called this daughter, who has 10 years. They called her with a pistol. And they messed up my house like they did. And they kicked me out. And they got in. And they continue to threaten me. They keep doing things. And I wanted to ask them, here, the local magistrate, Mike Hernandez, if he knew everything that happened with my case. And I want to ask him, what's going on? When will it end with me? Because here, the local magistrate, Mike Hernandez, once we had a meeting in an church, with two parents, and it was the local magistrate, Mike Hernandez, and he was the sheriff of the hotel, William. And where did we go? He promised me that he would go to the park. It was called, "Where they killed my daughter." It was called, "Where they killed my daughter." The name of my daughter has never been fulfilled. He promised me other things, but he hasn't. Where should I go to put her? There, where I live, on the street. There is a lot of drugs. There is where you should put the police. And there you don't go. Instead, only in my house. And they only bother me. And there is a lot of drugs. And I asked the local magistrate, Mike Hernandez, that's what I asked all the policemen. To clean all the drugs that are there and all that porridge. And he doesn't do it. And why do they bother me? Me, me, me?
Thank you, sir. Yes. Yes, we can. Yeah. Not everybody heard that. Well, all right. You go get someone to translate. And let me call on the rest of the people while you do that. And we can keep the meeting moving. Next, I have two people from the Green Party who have said they are here representing the Parker Center victims. So, if I could ask you not to repeat each other, or perhaps one of you would represent both of you. I have Jack Neff and Jack Michon in the same handwriting.
Honorable council persons, I am privileged to address you together as a body on the subject of the federal consent decree. I'm Jack Neff.
Okay, thank you.
I was at October 22nd. You will be undoubtedly, you know, hearing arguments for settlements on that. So, I won't review it. But my comments here are in support of the consent decree. And to rebut the statements of Mr. Hunt, and I believe his name was Bernard. The primary objectives of the LAPD, as stated for the command level officers and, you know, as put forward as the policy, it relies on anecdotal evidence. Okay, this person was killed by a savage animal. This person was savagely attacked. These people were innocent and unarmed. And what we have in the facts column is a crime and cover-ups by the LAPD. Laundry list of allegations. You all regularly address them in approving settlements. Mr. Hunt and Bernard also claim that local control is absolute and entirely in the province of the city council. The United States has 400 years of litigation about issues of local control versus larger government. I'd like to point out, 200 of those years have been in Los Angeles. My question is, are you going to get to the point where the city council has to float a bond issue to approve police abuse settlements? You know, no one is policing the police. Department of Justice says they have a plan. If the council has faith in them, I think you can turn to the voters, your constituents, and we will see you through on that. If you continue to back the police, the only outlet for public dissent, which is intolerated by the LAPD, in the face of dissent, they will attack a cameraman and smash his head and his camera, and arrest him for his trouble. So, we need outlets for dissent. If the city council will not take the voice, then the people will go face-to-face with the LAPD. And you're going to have to float a bond issue or do something about these settlements. It's a crisis. Please answer it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, were you speaking for both of you? Yes, thank you. All right. I now have two more PPL representatives, Dennis Zine and Donald Lint. And gentlemen, we are always delighted to see you. But could you focus on something different from what your compatriots have already said?
Yes, we're delighted to see you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak before this distinguished counsel. Dennis Zine, Vice President of the Police Protectively League. We don't often agree with management, but in this particular case, we do. We are opposed to this, along with management. However, we do support police reform. If you approve this, what I asked for, on behalf of the rank-and-file of the LA Police Department, call for serious meet-and-confer, and not just window dressing talks and negotiations. Implementation, if this is approved, is critical. And the real test to this consent decree is the implementation by the rank-and-file. You must gain the support of the rank-and-file to make this consent decree work. Please consider their needs and include us, their elected representatives, in serious meet-and-confer discussions if you do approve this consent decree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Donald Lint. And I'm a director with the Los Angeles Police Protectively League. The Police Protectively League is once again asking you not to approve the consent decree today and to include the league in deliberations over reforming the policing of Los Angeles. We are concerned that you are going to ratify this consent decree without consulting rank-and-file police officers. And that the decree's measures do not include provisions for oversight by Los Angeles residents. Everyone recognizes that police reform is an urgent imperative. Yet, the two groups that it would affect most, namely, the residents of Los Angeles and the ordinary police officers, have not been consulted at all on this matter. We just want a seat at the table. Based on the understanding of the consent decree, the league feels that the measures fall far short of the meaningful police reform that we believe the city needs. Current proposals are weak and ineffectual. Despite what you may believe, we want meaningful reforms achieved as quickly as possible. But it has to be done right. That means involving the residents of Los Angeles so they can be confident that the reforms are real and transparent. As you know, on October 5th, the league made 15 recommendations for improving the consent decree. We note that already Mayor Richard Reardon has announced a plan based on one of our recommendations to redeploy senior lead officers. That leaves all of the other improvements still to discuss. Chief Bernard Parks stated in a press release regarding the resumption of the senior lead officer program, "I will ensure full cooperation by every member of this department to engage in efforts to accomplish our commitment to the Los Angeles community." How can you have full cooperation without full participation? The voice of ordinary police officers needs to be heard. Too many times, the city and LAPD management have rushed into ill-considered and ineffectual decisions that serve nobody. We fear that the same could happen here. You only need to look at what's going on in Pittsburgh to see the dangers of a poorly designed consent decree. Fewer arrests, higher crime. Hasty pudding is wholesome, but hasty measures fall half-baked. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mr. Jones, I believe, from the anti-globalization movement. And I apologize if I've got your name wrong here. I couldn't quite read it.
That's okay. Members of the city council, thank you for hearing me out. I'm going to speak in English in the hopes that I'm paid a little more respect than the woman who spoke in Spanish. In light of the recent developments in Rampart, these are by no means recent developments to citizens of Los Angeles who live in economically impoverished neighborhoods. However, this is new to mainstream corporate American media. In light of Rampart, the Democratic National Convention, I'm sure you all remember the East Berlin-type wall we erected in our city to prevent democracy from taking place, excuse me, and October 22nd and the recent killing. These demonstrations of unprecedented police aggression against masses of the public gathered to exercise our civil rights as guaranteed by our constitutional amendments leaves no question in my mind that the Los Angeles Police Department and all related agencies have grown beyond any measure of reasonable control. So, I'm here to speak in favor of the consent decree. Their use of chemical weapons, their use of surveillance. I'm sure that many of you noticed the Black Hawk helicopter hovering above downtown during the Democratic National Convention. That same helicopter was also recorded over Seattle and DC and Philly in the last couple of months. I think we should all agree, given that, we've reached almost the epitome of Orwellian control in Los Angeles in the name of curbing crime. Now, one of the officers that spoke a few moments ago, and I'm almost done. Please give me your respect, and I'll give you mine. Talked about rapes and murders and robberies. I want you to think about Rampart, and I want you to think about all the stuff that's come to light. How many of those rapes, murders, and robberies were committed by men with a badge? See, because we're villainizing an entire segment of society saying they're robbers and they're murderers. But the men that become police, they're saints. They're incapable of committing these acts. When the fact is, if one is guilty, we're all guilty. We're all part murderer. We're all part robber. We're all part racist, rapist, part whatever. These are things that are broken down by the economic echelon that we fall into in society. And I think that we should all think about what it means when police drive down the street in a car that says "to protect and serve." I don't think anyone can disagree that police are here to protect private property. And I don't think anyone else can disagree that most of the private property--
Let's go back to the consent decree.
Okay. I'm in support of the consent decree. And all I'm going to say to wrap it up is that the people in the LAPD and the higher-ups have had their seat at the table. They've had their seat at the table, and they haven't let anyone else sit down to eat. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. And I'd like to note, for the record, there was also a gentleman who spoke in Spanish. All right. We're now going to move to a report from our negotiating team. I guess Mr. Deaton or Mr. Hahn, are you going to start?
Yes. Council President, pro tempore members of the council, today you have a document before you that represents the most significant reforms ever proposed for the Los Angeles Police Department, for that matter, any police department in the nation. As I viewed this process from the start, the city needed to achieve four goals. To achieve real reform of the Los Angeles Police Department, to enhance the civilian oversight of the department, to maintain the chief of police as the day-to-day general manager of the department, and ensure that local civilian control of the department was maintained. And to ensure that the reforms that we commit to in this document are achievable in the manner and time periods we've committed to within the document. The document before you achieves all of these goals.
Fair enough, fair enough. Do we have somebody here who is prepared to translate, Mr. Hans and others, people's remarks into Spanish? Well, we have at least three council members who can do it. But they also have to listen and participate in this.
I think that the clerk has equipment for that purpose, and we should be using it.
Yeah, actually, we should have thought of that ahead of time. It's a perfectly reasonable request. But can we, do we have equipment? I mean, we're going to proceed while we do this. But can you do whatever you have to do to get it down here? We're working on it. Okay, go ahead.
Further, that the policy directives that were articulated both by the city council and those concerns that were raised by the mayor have also been achieved in this document. And let me also say that this document, this agreement, in no way, shape, or form is a takeover of the Los Angeles Police Department by the federal government. In fact, the federal government will have very little role during the life of this agreement if the city meets the goals to which we have committed. I'm confident the city can meet these goals. I believe that today will be seen as an important and positive turning point in the history of the Los Angeles Police Department. And this agreement is before you is between the city of Los Angeles and the United States of America through the United States Department of Justice. It has a number of features in the agreement. The agreement has been provided to you over the last two days. As you recall, we began meeting with the Department of Justice just slightly less than six months ago. And I believe that in looking at what we have before you, it addresses all the concerns of the United States as well as, I think, the people of this city. The most important feature of this document is one that the council already committed to. And that's the development of a computerized tracking system, Teams 2. City is committed to having that system operational within two years of this agreement. Additionally, a part of this agreement is, how do we investigate uses of force? All categorical uses of force, which is defined in the document as a serious uses of force, officer-involved shootings, once it result in serious injuries, will be investigated by a new Operation Headquarters Bureau unit. It will have rollout capabilities. They will also have all uses of force reviewed by the police commission. There's an additional beefing up of the Internal Affairs Group in this document. So, that also additional requirements on selecting people for the Internal Affairs Group. Important feature of this document is gathering data on motor vehicle and pedestrian stops. LAPD will commit to prepare a written or electronic log of all motor vehicle stops that will include the apparent race, age, and gender, the reason for the stop, whether the driver was made to exit the vehicle, whether there was any pat-down or search, or a reason for any search, and what, if anything, was discovered in the search. The same will apply to pedestrian stops. That LAPD will commit to prepare a written or electronic log of all defined pedestrian stops, including apparent race, age, and gender, reason for stop, and whether or not there was a pat-down search, and whether anything was discovered in that search. This information will be collected through a check-off form, which will mainly have brief fill-in-the-blank areas if necessary. We are committing to improve management of our gang units, prohibiting gang unit officers from working out of uniform or using confidential informants. As to confidential informants, the city will prepare a list of all confidential informants to be kept in a central database. Confidential informants will only be able to be used by non-uniform personnel. And we are committed to publish a department manual on the use of confidential informants. As to the issue of dealing with those with mental health problems, we're going to conduct an evaluation of all programs across the country that are dealing with this issue. We will evaluate our current LAPD program. The city will prepare a report for the police commission with recommendations for change. The mayor and the city council will get that commission report and any actions the commission takes. We're also going to then audit what we've done over the past year from the date of this agreement on how we have responded to persons with mental illness. Additional training reforms are part of this document, including improved selection criteria for field training officers. We want to improve that program. We're also going to be committing to training new recruits and civilian members of the boards of rights. And also allow procedure for officers to make training suggestions. Supervisors up to the rank of captain will have to have specific job, specific training before they are promoted. Captains must be enrolled and have the training commenced before they're promoted. Important part of this agreement will be audits. Audits by LAPD itself. The chief will submit an annual audit plan to the commission and the inspector general. The chief of police will report on that plan quarterly. The chief of police will create a special audit unit within the chief's office to guarantee implementation. The LAPD will do audits on the use of search warrants. They will audit arrest reports. They will audit uses of force, the motor vehicle and pedestrian stops I mentioned, and also investigations of uses of force in all complaints. They'll report on the disposition of complaints and whether there was discipline or lack of discipline. We're going to audit the work of all the gang units. We're going to require financial disclosure of any officers who handle any contraband or cash. The LAPD will also audit a number of other things, including compliance with Special Order 40, audit uses of force resulting in skeletal fractures, and also audit our own training. Inspector General will also get copies of all the audits. The inspector general will evaluate the audits for the police commission. The inspector general will also audit uses of force and complaints. The inspector general will audit the use of Teams 2 by LAPD. This comprehensive tracking system is going to be used to know everything about an officer. So, when a decision is made for promotion or assignment to a sensitive unit, Teams 2 will be used. Then IG will audit to see whether or not, in fact, that occurs. The police commission will review all categorical uses of force. The police commission will review all the audit reports. And the police commission, most importantly, will review and approve all the policies and all the procedures that are needed to implement this agreement. They will also evaluate the chief of police and the chief of police's performance on implementing this agreement. The inspector general will also have the capability to roll out his or her own team on all categorical use of force incidents. Inspector general will also be able to attend use-of-force review board meetings, may interview participants after the hearing has been conducted. Important part of this agreement also is that the LAPD shall promptly provide documents to the inspector general as requested by the inspector general and as necessary to carry out the agreement. The city will conduct community outreach and public information on this agreement through a series of meetings in each geographic area. And on the city's website and in other means, the LAPD shall publish reports on arrests, motor vehicle stops, pedestrian stops, information on the audits completed, a summary of all discipline imposed, new policies that were adopted to comply with the agreement, and any compliance reports of the monitor. As to the monitor, the city and the Department of Justice will attempt first to mutually select the monitor or process to select the monitor. If that fails, there's a process in the agreement where the city and the Department of Justice would submit two names to the federal judge overseeing this agreement, and then the judge would select the monitor. If a judge selects the monitor, there is a cap on the cost of the monitor of $10 million over the five years of the agreement. The monitor will have full and direct access to all city employees and facilities. The monitor shall review all audits. The monitor shall review samples of investigations and reports. The monitor can make confidential written evaluations of investigations and recommend changes or improvements for any future investigations. But no closed investigations can be reopened by the monitor. The monitor will file a quarterly written report on the city's compliance with each substantive provision of this agreement. Finally, the city will file itself a semi-annual report on its progress on implementing this agreement with copies to the monitor and the DOJ. The Department of Justice itself will also have reasonable access to any city personnel, facilities, and documents. The city agrees to implement this agreement in stages, at different times. Either within 120 days or by July 1st, 2001, as set out in the agreement. We also negotiated a time limit on this agreement that after five years, the agreement will end unless the Department of Justice affirmatively moves to extend the agreement. If the Department of Justice does so, the burden will shift to the city to demonstrate it is compliance. We can go over individual provisions. If there's any questions about what I've just said, but that is a broad overview of the agreement before you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else from the negotiating team want to comment? Ms. Martin, deputy mayor.
Good afternoon. The mayor announced today that he is prepared, if the council passes this agreement, to sign it. The summary of the provisions that City Attorney Hahn gave you was a good one. But I think it's important that all of us recognize, and especially the people of Los Angeles recognize, that there are a significant number of things contained in this agreement that reflects actions taken by the city after Rampart to make corrections. And we have just not sat still and waited for the Justice Department to come in. Actions with respect to the management of gang units, confidential informants, inspector general rollouts, all are substantially continuations of some of the progress we started after Rampart. And I think that's important for everyone to recognize. And I also think that it's important to recognize that this does preserve the existing rules of all of these city officials.
Anybody else? Mr. Deaton?
Madam President, members of the council, the council requested several changes. We believe those changes have been made. There were some changes that were requested by the mayor and by the president of the council, along with Councilman Padilla. We believe those changes have been incorporated in this document. And the document is, has the support of the entire negotiating team.
So, just so I'm clear on procedures here, in the absence of, Mr. Holden does want to be heard, and I'm sure there will be others. But basically, what we have before us is the revised document based on your most recent weeks of work.
Right.
And so, the motion is just to sign it or not to sign it.
That's my, and that's my recommendation.
Yes.
I think--
I think we got that, Mr. Hahn. I think that was pretty clear.
I do not believe anybody at either one of these tables would particularly like to go back and--
No, I know you've all had a hard time, Mr. Chalif.
Purgatory comes to mind.
Yeah, I know. I just want to make sure that we're procedurally okay in terms of what we're doing in this meeting.
I concur with what's been said and agree that the document is-- we've achieved, I think, a good document that should be signed. And none of us want to go back and try to renegotiate any item.
Yes, go ahead.
If I can just add, on behalf of the chief of police, Chief Bernard Parks, clearly, this has been a long, difficult process. And as has been stated, we finally have come to a document to a document that clearly seems to have the support of the council and the mayor. Our responsibility from this point forward is to aggressively move forward to implement the requirements of this document, and while doing that, keeping our eye on the issue of crime, because after all, crime is part of what we're here for. So, again, we will move very aggressively to implement the requirements of this document.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
It's my understanding that the Rampart Independent Review Panel's report will be out in about two weeks, and I've been asked a question about how these documents may fit together, and I think they're complementary, and the consent decree will set the platform upon which to build from the Rampart recommendations. And the commission will take up each and every recommendation that is made by the Rampart panel to provide a public airing for each one of these, so that we can see which one should be adopted.
Okay. And while you were all doing that, we now have five people who wish to be heard. Mr. Holden was first.
Madam President, members, this urgency to sign on to the consent decree, to me, is an automatic suspect. It's in everybody's mind that you want this done prior to the election. And by rushing, as they say, to judgment, you don't cross all the Ts and dot all the Is and understand the action that you've taken. You won't know the damage you've done until it's too late. I think public safety is number one, and of course, police conduct is on the high priority, misconduct is on the high priority list. What you're doing here today is not the right approach to take. Take some more time, have longer deliberation. For example, you've cited what shall be done, who's looking over who's back. This person will check the police chief to see whether he's doing his job. This person will check the police commission to see what they're doing. This person, and anyone, at any one time, in anyone's opinion, that they don't think the job is being done as it should be done, according to what they think it should be, they can go in and allege a lawsuit. Now, it may not be the appropriate thing to do, but they can do just that. And whether you have a defense or not, that's questionable. Only the court will decide in time. Yes, you have turned your department over to the Justice Department. I remember standing here, we were debating this case, this consent decree, and I said that I talked to someone at the Justice Department, and someone stand up, you know, and shot off and say, "Well, so did my three-year-old kid talk to Bill Lang Lee." Making a real joke out of it. But it's a good thing I did talk to them, because it was through their office and their efforts that the mayor's proposals were implemented in the first place. They backed off and did, in fact, consider it. Point on point. Now, you probably couldn't have gotten more clarification in the consent decree if you just only had asked for it and taken the time to negotiate it. But the hunger to have something on your, with your name on it, the hunger to have this thing done and say, "I'm the proud author of it," is a mistake and will come home to haunt you. I'm willing to say here today that I'm probably the only member of the city council who's been subjected to police abuse where you might think you would have lost your life. Not one other person who's had a gun pointed at their head by LAPD officers and said, "I will shoot you if you move funny-like." Not one other person. And at the same time, it's not that I'm defending, not at all, bad cops, because bad cops should be dealt with. But at the same time, we do care about public safety. And what you have done here is put more people checking records in the boardrooms, in the back rooms, police officers themselves, second-guessing themselves, than having the people on the street. And I won't talk anymore if you let me give one more point. Just the other day, I heard a guy testify, just today, saying, "Mr. Lee, who was killed," and that was an unfortunate situation, "and the chief was being blamed for it." Don't you think you can mobilize some people and cause a redress to that issue? But think of this, the two guns, you use, the real gun and the toy gun, the toy gun was illegal. You cannot possess or buy a toy gun that does not have those highlighted markings in the city of Los Angeles and the state of California. And that is a fact, and that is the law. So, you know, you go ahead and do what you want to do. I'm against bad cops, never said I was, but I'm for public safety also, and you are really pushing the limit.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Padilla.
You always do that.
Thank you, Madam President. I have just a couple of questions for the negotiating team. Well, we, after a lot of deliberation, not just negotiation from the team's standpoint, and I thank you again for your hard work, but deliberation by this council, you were given a number of directives to go back to the Department of Justice, and I think this agreement reflects pretty much all of those directives. But there were a few key points that I want to make sure are highlighted, so that we're at a comfortable point in terms of our understanding with that before we vote today. I know Teams 2 is probably the most intricate, most challenging element of the reforms that's in the consent decree, and I'm glad to see that we now have a two-year timeframe for implementation, because that was not what was in the draft agreement that we considered a month and a half ago. But the two other areas, as I've talked to people, as I've talked to the public, as I've talked to officers, that I think there's a lot of misinformation and possible confusion about is, A, the specific role of the federal monitor. I think we spoke loudly and clearly that we would only stand for someone at an arm's distance and some oversight of the department, but definitely not somebody who would be involved on a day-to-day basis or have day-to-day management responsibilities of the department. We don't want to turn our department over to a federal employee or a monitor of any type. We have a Chief of Police, and they need to continue to do their job. And yes, there's an arm's-distance role for a monitor to play. That's number one. If you can explain what's in the agreement in that category. The other is, how does this affect the officers on the street? Again, we don't want to hamper police officers, and police officers themselves are concerned and have questions about, what does this exactly mean for them? And I hear in your presentation that, you know, there's some data collection elements involved, but can you explain to us with a little bit more detail on what this means for a police officer on the street? And after those questions are answered, Madam President, I do move approval of this document.
To answer the, to answer the first question, Councilman Padilla, the, in paragraph 161 of the document, the language is, "The monitor shall not and is not intended to replace or take over the role and duties of the mayor, city council, commission, chief of police, or inspector general." And that language was in there, in addition to other language, it said that the monitor can only have the duties that are specified in this agreement. Monitor's role is really to audit the progress, to report that progress to the court, to see that the commitments that have been made by the city are actually lived up to. Again, the monitor would have the ability to access and review administrative investigations. If the monitor, for instance, was unsatisfied with a particular investigation, the monitor won't have the ability to have that particular investigation reopened. But the monitor can make suggestions and recommendations on what should be done in the future. The monitor's role, again, is one of a reporter, an advisor to the court. The monitor will have no management authority and no ability to interfere with the operation of the police department. As to the rank-and-file officers in the field, they will have a new duty under this agreement to capture data on pedestrian and motor vehicle stops, to record the apparent racial background of the person stopped, their age and gender, why they were stopped, and whether or not a search was conducted, whether or not anything was recovered from that search. We expect that, based on reviews of those checkoff lists in places like San Jose and San Diego, that that data collection would take no more than 30 to 45 seconds. In addition, the officers under this agreement will know that all of their arrests, all of their searches, all of their search warrants, all of their commendations, as well as all of their complaints, will be collected into a computerized personnel tracking system, which will also be used to evaluate their annual performance and be used when they are considered for promotion or assignment to special units.
So, just three quick yes-no questions to make sure I understood it correctly. You said, "As far as police officers on the street are concerned, this is maybe another 30 to 45 seconds of their documentation, not a 10 to 30-minute timeline that people were concerned about."
That's correct.
Okay. The federal monitor is not a day-to-day presence in the, in the police department?
No.
No. And so, this is not a federal takeover of the police department?
Not in any way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Chick.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. First of all, contrary to one of my colleagues, I think that we didn't rush to judgment here. I think it's been a good six months. Most of you intimately involved in the negotiations know how long and hard you've been at work. And I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you to the negotiators, that I think you did an unbelievable job in the face of all kinds of mountains to climb. I'm sure many of you also struggled with having to agree to things that perhaps you were being pushed to agree to, but that is what a compromise and a consensus is all about. So, I think, colleagues, that what is before us is about as good as it can get in terms of a consent decree. I've been on record almost from the beginning of these conversations in support of going forward with a carefully worked-out consent decree, and I believe that is what we have before us today. We have too long of a history of very expensive, in terms of the toll on human beings and the toll in dollars, too long of a history of unsolved and unresolved problems with our Los Angeles Police Department. One has to hope that this is the last big step, along with the independent review panel from the commission, to finally self-correct. But I am concerned about remaining meet-and-confer issues, and would be interested to hear back from anyone involved in the team that has comments to make. We have quite a few. I don't know if there's an exact number, but there's a long list of items that are to be discussed in the meet-and-confer process. We heard, all of us, from our friends in the league, how they felt about not being at the table. So, the meet-and-confer process is the only opportunity for them to participate in a discussion, I assume, on things that very much impact their daily lives and their jobs. So, I'd be interested to know how many things, and then if you would comment and educate both us and the public that's listening in terms of the meet-and-confer process, how it works in the ideal sense. And I believe the Department of Justice has also put something in the consent decree, if, if they're not satisfied with the results of the meet-and-confer, that there's a consequence. So, if you could touch on that.
First, to start off, this morning, for the second time in as many weeks, a request for a temporary restraining order by the Police Protective League to prevent the city from going forward on the consent decree was denied by Superior Court Judge Chanoffs. The judge, in her comments, several times said there may be a very limited number of issues that could be considered meet-and-confer issues, that the judge, several times during her tentative decision from the bench, indicated that there were important public policy issues here that shouldn't be held up by lengthy negotiations, that many of the things in this document are, in fact, management rights that are not subject to meet-and-confer. We have committed to the Department of Justice that after the finalization of this agreement, we will come up with a tentative list of items that we believe are subject to meet-and-confer. As you know, as you well know, you know, what the city, what management thinks is subject to meet-and-confer and what bargaining units think is subject to meet-and-confer can differ. And so, you know, that obviously will be one of the items under discussion. We believe that the document also covers the situations that if the city and the bargaining units aren't able to reach agreement on these provisions, we have mechanisms to get relief by going before the federal judge who will be administering this decree. In fact, the, there has been precedent in other federal circuits, in Florida, where police unions have participated in discussions before a federal judge on the implementing provisions of a consent decree. So, we think there'll be a forum to do this if we aren't able to reach agreement. We're also going to tell the Department of Justice, if we do reach an agreement on something that seems a little bit different than what we've agreed to in the decree, then we have to notify the Department of Justice. They may agree to modify the decree based on what we've reached an agreement with the bargaining units on. If they don't agree, they have the ability to go into court. So, we've set up a number of procedures to accommodate the requirements that the city should negotiate in good faith on items that affect conditions of employment. But we also believe that much of this document is not subject to meet-and-confer and shouldn't be held up while we, while we engage in lengthy negotiations.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, there's a number of things about this that disturb me. Not the most of all, but significant is the cost. First-year cost will be approximately $102 million. $30 million of this was already requested by the LAPD as part of the integrity assurance plan. Another thing that disturbs me a lot is the fact that provisions of the penal code, which protect peace officers' personal records as confidential and should be not disclosed except by discovery pursuant to Sections 1043 and 1046 of the Evidence Code. The inclusion of this provision in the consent decree will either cause the city to be out of compliance or result in litigation against the city for releasing confidential information. There's a number of other costs that I'm not going to get into, but they total about $10 million over five years. But most important, most important is that we're giving up control, which is, which belongs to local government, to the federal government. And I think that that flies in the face of everything that any of us who are involved in local government ever want. Now, yes, there's a lot of blame to go around, and yes, there are some bad cops, and yes, they need to be dealt with, as Mr. Holden said. But the way to deal with them is not by destroying the police department or destroying this city's ability to be in charge of its own police department, and that's what we're doing. You may think you're just getting an oversight, but believe me, you are going to get a lot more than that. I know the votes are here to pass this thing, and I probably, but I came down today because I felt it was my responsibility to speak up and let you know what you're doing. You're going to vote for it anyway, I know that, okay? But I'm going to tell you that you're going to look back in years and see that you are giving up a right that belongs to this city, that belongs to this city. You are going to, there's going to be so much time spent in record-keeping and paper-shuffling that the police are not going to be able to do their duty. They're going to be afraid to do their duty, and it's going to result in a lack of safety for the public. That's what's happening, and that's what you're doing here today. And I'm here to tell you that. You may not like it, and I'm willing to take my share of the blame for not being more active in filling some of the Christopher Commission's requests that we should have done, and we should have been more active, and we should have been more vigilant on what was happening, and the commission deserves a share of that, the mayor deserves a share of that, and the police chief, police chiefs deserve a share of that. But we should not make the mistake of throwing everything out. I think we're all so anxious, you're all so anxious to get this over with, that you're willing to give up a very important right, and not only a right, but a duty that you have, that you were elected to protect the rights of the people of Los Angeles and keep their police department under local control. And don't forget that, because I don't think the voters are going to forget it in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Fuhr. Oh, sorry, Ms. Martin.
Councilman Burnson, just one thing that you stated about the requirement that information be turned over, that violates state provisions of state law with respect to information on police officers and needing it to be in discovery. Because of those state law requirements, we negotiated the Justice Department to take that out of this agreement. It was in there at one point. Yes, we took it out.
Okay. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I listened very carefully with due respect to our colleague, Mr. Burnson's comments, in particular, taking the perspective of how will we look at this day in the future? Let's take that perspective for a second. If we lose sight of the context today, we make a big mistake. Better it would be if all of us were collectively sitting here talking about what the city was unilaterally prepared to do a few years ago even. Would have been a better discussion. But that's not where we are. The choice is very plain for us. We can be sued and lose and have a federal judge tell us how to run the police department, which nobody wants, because no one would have elected that federal judge. And that would be the consequence of failing to ratify this agreement today, let's be clear. Or we can actually affirmatively choose to take some control. This is not about losing control or abdicating responsibility. This is about assuming control where the choice is just the opposite. And in that setting, I think there's obviously no choice but to ratify the agreement, but not to think of today as the defining moment, because it's not. The defining moments are yet to come. The proof of our commitment that we are affirming today is going to be in how we implement the decree's provisions down the road. That will be how we are perceived, I think, by future leaders in the city and our residents in years to come. We'll be measured by our ability to actually live up to the promises that we're making in this document today. Ms. Martin indicated that many of those promises predate the actual negotiations with the Department of Justice and relate to things that we have felt all along are a good thing for us to do. There are at least two constituencies here that we need to be thinking about, among others. One, the residents of the city as a whole. What do they need most from this decree? I think two things. They need to be able to trust our police officers and have confidence in them. They also need to live in a safe city. And the question is to whether this document undermines safety in the city is an important one. But I think the answers to that question are contained in the decree itself. The decree itself, I think, is likely not only to help restore confidence, but actually give the police department and its management tools to assure we are, in fact, a safer city. And when issues arise, like the racial profiling question, and let's address that head-on, because there have been those who've come before us today to say that we ought not be collecting that data. The fact is that I think central to assuring that all our residents have confidence in our department is that we collect the data, but that too is only the beginning, is how we, what we do with that, that'll be the measure of our success. 30, 45 seconds, a minute and a half, two minutes, that amount of time will be worth it if, in the long run, we take important steps to assure that every resident of our city, no matter what their skin color, believes accurately that our police department is there to protect them and to be their partner in making Los Angeles safer.
Ms. Zakowski.
I share the, actually, the comment of Ms. Chick, who said, "This is not a rush to judgment," as was indicated earlier. And I think you cited about six months' worth of effort that our negotiators have been working with DOJ, and that's right for this chapter. But in fact, the rush to judgment, or lack of rush to judgment, I think goes back to '92 and '93, when we had the Christopher Commission report and then the action of the city to change the charter, to change the way that we monitor and govern the police department in '93. And we are still fulfilling that judgment, it seems to me, and that commitment. And, members of the council, that's been the problem. We have engaged in significant, real reform of the police department before. We have put forward reform proposals, but what we lacked was the commitment, lacked the support for the commitment to follow through. And to my way of thinking, that's what this is today, that we are... And to my way of thinking, that's what this is today, that we are acknowledging that we will maintain local control. We will maintain local civilian control by our police commission of the Los Angeles Police Department. But what we are not afraid to do is say to DOJ, you can be here as our partner, looking to see that we maintain the commitment that we are making today. I was concerned, too, about the meet-and-confer issues, and I think part of the non-rushing to judgment and part of the long deliberation since September and today that our negotiating team went through was to let the Department of Justice know how important the meet-and-confer processes are in our process, how important state law is that may be different or that is not common across the country in terms of employee bargaining rights and employee issues and protection of police officers' rights. And I think part of the long delay to get here today is to incorporate those references and to incorporate that acknowledgement. And in fact, as you read this today, I was actually somewhat surprised that the league actually continued with the court case, because I think this document says very straightforwardly that nothing can be implemented without their meet-and-confer process. I also just want to reiterate that those other police departments throughout the country and throughout this state, and they are every other large city police department in this state, do a racial profiling of their stops, pedestrian and traffic, and it has not hindered their activity. And in fact, the two that I looked at that were from the national report from both Massachusetts and New Jersey, the State Troopers in New Jersey, and I think the Highway Patrol in Massachusetts, indicated that it was not problematic and providing worthwhile and beneficial data. So I think we, again, basically, we need to reinforce that this is maintaining local control, but is maintaining local control of our police department with a commitment this time to embark on these reforms that have been long sought, long in demand, long needed, and we are making that commitment today, and that's what this is about.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, as you know, I have always been very opposed to the signing of the consent decree, because I believed initially, as it was drafted, that it would basically give control of the police department to the Department of Justice, and I had little faith in the Department of Justice because of their history in terms of this whole issue. But here we are today now with a new version of the consent decree, where Council President Ferraro and my colleague, Councilmember Padilla, working through the mayor's office, were able to fashion a compromise that gave us an opportunity to do our job and to do our work here. And I think that's one of the most important things that I've been asking for from the beginning, is just the opportunity for us as a city to clean our house and get things in order before the Department of Justice steps in and tries to run the department. So I think we have a win-win situation today. Unfortunately, I believe that we still have some work to do when it comes to dealing with the rank-and-file and the police officers who are going to implement these reforms. We need to seriously work with the league and any other entity who is responsible for carrying out this mandate, because at the end of the day, as much as we wish for things to change, they will be the ones who will be making things change. And so I'm not sure if the meet-and-confer process is the parameters that we need to work under, but I am committed to making this a successful process, working with the league, all of the management concerns that were raised, and, most importantly, because I think sometimes we forget this, the residents of the city of Los Angeles who have the biggest stake in this whole process. So I'm going to be supporting it today, because I think it moves us in the right direction with the compromises and the new parameters that we've put on the monitor. So I stand in support of this consent decree.
All right. I'm going to call Mr. Ridley Thomas in a minute. I just want to point out to you that we have an amending motion on the desk, which is basically instructing our negotiating team to begin the mechanics of selection for a monitor so that we will be able to be in compliance with the time. Thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, I move the previous question on the entire matter.
Including the amendment.
The entire matter, Madam President.
I got you. All right. Open the roll on previous question. Now, open the roll on previous question, then you can have your point of view.
Amendment has not been introduced.
Oh, it is.
Yes, it's introduced.
Well, you were out of order when they moved it. You were not recognized to move the previous, to move the amendment.
Mr. Holden, we are now voting on the previous question. Open the roll on previous question, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, three noes.
I believe that passed. All right. We now have before us the consent decree as moved by Mr. Padilla, with the amendment as moved by Ms. Zikowsky and myself. Open, we don't need separate votes on those, do we? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Mr. Holden, did you want to? All right. Did you want to vote no, so we should record? Yes, all right. Record Mr. Holden as a no as well, and we'll announce that vote again. So it's now 11 ayes and two noes, I believe, for that. So that is approved forthwith on that. Thank you all, especially to our negotiators. Take the evening off. You're going to be back at work tomorrow. We are adjourned. And I would like to say to our friends from the Brown Berets that I apologize to you about the translation. You're absolutely right, we should have had translation, and we're going to make sure that henceforth we have translation available at all our meetings, because you're absolutely correct.
The city is more than half-Spanish-speaking.
Absolutely. You are completely right.
Thank you.
You are completely right.
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 You are completely right.